We will open the meeting at four seven. Please sign your cell phones and put in your consent to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, do you want to hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
I will read out the agendas presented.
Second.
I'll second.
Motion made, second, take your paper.
Aye.
I hear a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I will approve the consent agenda as presented.
That's okay.
Motion made, second, take your paper.
Aye.
We'll move on down to the guest speaker's communication informational item. First thing we have on here is Lake County Local Public Safety Coordination Agenda for April fourth. And there's really nothing in here.
Well, when we get to, um, when we get to council updates, I'll give a report on the meeting I attended.
Okay. Uh, next we have a letter from Doris Benson. And this is, uh, problems with the deer and neighbor dogs becoming aggressive. I know the deer is a problem. We've talked to fish and water life, I don't know how many times. But their comment is that, uh, if you have a problem with a deer and it's very aggressive, let them know, they will come take care of it. And that's about as far as I've gotten with them. I've had with them three times over this.
Well, there was a new house bill that passed the beginning of this year that, or is effective this year, for communities to address the issues of nuisance, um, deer. So, maybe that's something that we can readdress because there was some funding, there's some permissions and working with local OSP and fish and wildlife agencies that now allow the legal remove them and they, you know, discuss the means, not necessarily shooting kill situations, but relocating and things like that. Maybe we need, because I think a lot of us have kind of felt that it's gotten a little out of hand. I know it cost me about $20,000 in damage to my car. And, yeah, so it did not hit, I did not hit it, it hit me. So, it was it, I was driving in the middle of the day and, you know, one right in the back of my car, yeah. So, um, you know, I think that it's definitely something we need to address and I'm not sure if there's somebody that can respond to the Doris.
Actually, I'm going to look it up. I will contact.
I usually respond to these, I think these letters too.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll tell her that we're going to be looking at that. I'll look at that.
Yeah. All right. Um, next on there is memorandum. We have a meeting, um, April twenty second, packed meeting. You know, BCC highlights, two thousand nineteen, two thousand nineteen.
From that, I would just like to say, I think they are doing a terrific job there with getting more students, getting more people graduated, more nurses this year that probably won't be staying with and in the community to work in. So, it's been a really a boon for our community, I think, for having that colleagues there.
And they also mentioned here in the future, adding workforce training within the CBL construction basis for information management, working on pre- apprenticeship programs, adult GED and EFL, EF, yeah, EFL. So, that's for Lake County in the future. Next informational is from CIS. Okay, um, I have another, one that just came in and it was put in my box, an informational of, you know, what we can do about, says please ban all unauthorized vehicles, ATVs, motorcycles from using the road, starting at East Street, South Ninth, going up past the South Water Camp and then on the Deadman's Creek from South Fifth. This area is a huge fire hazard and does not allow good access to hillside because of the houses. Uh, the time to act is now, not after a fire. Um, I thought at one point we had a gate up there, um, on the South Tank.
I don't remember.
I don't think there is a gate there. I don't think there is a gate there.
Was there one at one point?
There was there. I haven't been up that road in a while. I think there used to be one down right behind, uh, Dr. Colly's there.
Yeah.
At one time.
Oh, yeah. I think there was at one time, but I don't think it's gated now.
I'll have to look, I'll go down and look at it. I'll be there.
I'll go down and see if there's nothing.
Do we have any, anything else under guest speaker's communication or informational items? Okay, move on to department reports. Nine one one, Scott's not here. Can we move over to Dennis?
I have nothing further unless you have questions. Um, well, I do have something further, I guess. Ronnie went over and he's picking up that aerial apparatus, should be over here and see if he'll, he'll be on the street tomorrow, if you want to come and take a look at it.
Can you get that up and running? And so, when you guys get it all figured out, why don't you set up a time where council can come over and you can show everybody?
Want to climb the ladder? A hundred feet? Yes, we will. It shouldn't take that long to get it going. It's got mostly equipment on it, it's just, you'll have to transfer our stuff and then we'll go from there and try and figure out how to get up the building. It's very narrow and how to go from there.
Okay. Uh, get up from up here, but we do have this report.
Can I make a comment before you?
Yeah.
I just want to give credit to the town, employees, numerous agencies as well, but those guys really worked hard last night, I think. Um, I think most of us were very dirty and wet and, uh, I just want to tell them thank you, that we really appreciate it and if you could relay that to them, they did a great job. We've heard nothing but positives.
Well, while I was down there, I've never seen too many volunteers go down and fill sandbags and throw sandbags, haul sandbags and, uh, I was amazed at the public that came out and helped and it was real well appreciated. We moved from the fire station down to Lipsey for the staging area and working with Lipsey worked out really well because they're, they have done this kind of thing before as far as fire and they just applied it to the water or flood system and it worked out really well. So, and working with Daniel, I picked up a lot of stuff there. So, it was nice to see, like you said, all the agencies get together, county, city, state, federal.
The kids.
And the public, it was wonderful and to have a business offer to give out free coffee and cocoa, you couldn't ask for more than that. Oh, village.
Village, gosh. I had no idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was great. I think the community really pulled together and it's times like that that really remind us of what a great community it was and it was pretty impressive. Pretty impressive, all the kids that were out. I was really impressed with those kids.
Yep.
That was pretty cool. Yeah. They were really helping me.
Okay, let's move on down to Daryl.
Um, we were planning a pre, or a pre-construction meeting on the eleventh. Um, I think we're going to have to change that. My pre-work doesn't seem to be able to be here that time, so I am going to reschedule that, probably sometime next week. So, that won't be happening this week. Um, project was awarded, so we're going to keep moving through the, through the process. Things, uh, went pretty well last night, as you said, and a lot of volunteers, a lot of help. Structures, uh, work really well, like they were planning to work. One thing I'd like to add, the debris basins, uh, the creek channels and other things as part of that project, uh, the town's required to maintain those and clean them out. So, um, we have some other issues in the storm drain, some of our storm drains are empty on the railroad right away. Some of those ditches haven't been cleaned along the railroad in decades. So, um, anyway, those are things to keep in mind during the budget process, if we could budget some money or something so we can get some of that work, some of that work done, especially after a major event like we had, so.
Well, that happened fast.
It was the right combination of snow, rain and temperature.
Right. And the dam is still there.
Yeah, the dam's still there.
Jesus. Do you know what this is supposed to do?
I don't know who started that, but, yeah, there was a lot of people worried about the dam and it's in great shape. And I went up, I went up and looked at it this morning, the water table has really dropped from what it was last night. And there's some issues that I've noticed that we need to work on and I want to get with you and stuff. Uh, let's move on down to town manager. Nothing there? Yeah? Old business, layers on. You guys want to continue that now, finished up, or do you want to give them those, Darwin's not here?
I don't know, we move it to the end of the agenda so that people that are waiting to do some business can get it done.
Let's move on to new business. Uh, we have a, the occupied East Street. My eight, this to me, I'm never ready to see it, as, uh, who all was involved in this? So, we go back to first two thousand ten, this two thousand seventeen. If you didn't want to know, if anybody had some ideas as to what they could add to drop East Street down. I mentioned it, it was a building.
He was going to get a letter too for the closure for the street.
Which is?
I didn't actually see a letter. He didn't specifically ask them and he called and talked about it and was going to bring one.
Okay, I thought he did bring one over.
He said from the alley, they wanted to leave North First Street, the alley, to East Street also. And then, as usual, from center, the first on.
Okay. And then we got a notice of award, Lake River. Um, did we, where did we sign that?
No, you need to sign this now.
Okay, so, but we did award it, okay. I'll get that moved in. And I did see, I did get an email that we got the extra funding, so. And the pre-work meeting, we're going to have, who's the Chamber of Commerce, Western Air, but Air Force.
What's the pre-work meeting? Is that?
It's a pre-job conference for Lake River.
Oh, oh, okay. So, that will be set, et al. All right. And this letter Jessica would like to address a little bit.
Yep, so, I turned that letter in, but actually, the, the place we are talking about is owned by Washington Federal. So, I'll just give you guys a courtesy, just that we're going, we're working with Washington Federal and, um, we're going to put a statue up, uh, the third week of August is when it's slated to go up and it'll be of the two cowboy boots. There's an example in there of his work, that's not what's going up. Um, it's just kind of to show where it would have gone, where it'll, where it'll go, but it's to kick your boots off and stay a while. It'll be about six feet tall. It'll light from dusk till dawn.
Two.
Two boots. And it'll light up from dusk till dawn every night and it'll be placed approximately right where that picture shows. Um, we have secured funding for it, so it'll go up around the third week of August, right before roundup. And, so that'll be a great addition, I think, to, to town.
Okay. Next, Lake County Chamber Outback Trails Committee funds for brochure, designs and printing.
Righty. Sure. Sure. So, good afternoon, my name's Jamie Davis and along with Melissa Maxwell, we're chairing the Outback Trails Committee through the Chamber of Commerce. And this all kicked off about a year ago with the Rural Tourism Studio that we held at Warner Canyon. And from there, there were three committees that arrived, um, one of them was the Western Committee that Jessica just reported on, one of their action items. And then we're the Trails Committee and there's also the Geological Features. So, today we come with a request because, um, we are at a point with this really great project to support our Trails Committee and, um, that is by creating a brochure. Right now you have kind of a low-res draft template of what that brochure might look like here, and I'll have Melissa share a little bit more about that. But our request is for fifteen hundred dollars support from the Tourism Lodging Tax, no, no, Town Lodging Tax, sorry, I'm reading acronyms here, um, to use dollars to support this project. Um, we have definitely a lot of different stages and funding coming in to support this project, but specifically, um, the request is to help with the brochure, um, to increase tourism, to use our wonderful trails. So, it's coming over to Melissa to talk about this brochure.
Okay, so, do you want to put up these signs or?
Oh, no, we should have lots of signs too.
Okay, well, so we have a lot of great people that are working together with us in the community as far as, and on our committee and just participating with us from afar. And on the second page that you see are examples of the signs that we're going to put up on the Bullard, I guess it's the Bullard Road, so, the Bullard Road that's being frequently used right now, um, to show where to go on the trail. And one of those goes right at the pool where the old sign is located. Another sign will go at the shooting range, the gun range, and then another sign will go at Roger Meadow, but that one's, that one's a little bit different. Um, and, um, oh, and then another sign will be where the Dave's Bailout Trail, which is partway up Bullard Canyon, there's a bailout trail that, um, comes down and Dave agreed to have us name it after him because the trails are named after Nomi, so. Um, those are some examples that we are having done and Lisa Cahill is kind of the person in charge of, of these signs and getting those organized. Um, this weekend, actually, we're going to be putting in, um, reassurance markers on the trail, we hope to.
To pass it.
It all depends, this kind of, the weather kind of popped up, so we don't know if we're going to do that. And we have the NHS, LHS, National Honor Society helping us along with people on our committee, um, I don't know who else we want to include in that, but we're excited, we're, this is a work date on Saturday and then we have another, um, work date scheduled later on this month, which we might be taking advantage of.
Yeah.
So, the brochure that you see is the third page and it's not folded for you, but, um, it'll be a tri-fold is what you call it. And this is just a rough draft. The picture that you see on the front is not the actual picture we're using. We, um, are working with a company out of Kansas called, named Smith Bates and they're using photographs, so we're taking them professionally and he put this in here not realizing that this is not Bullard Canyon, so we're, we're definitely changing that. So, um, this is a brochure that we want to have in hotels, um, all throughout the state, at visitor centers, travel centers, chambers, things like that, and then here as well. And so, when you open it up, you see the trail uses and then when you further open, you have the map of the trails and this map was designed, we had, um, we worked with Shannon Field and actually Chris Bishop we started working with and then Shannon Field came into the picture and he, he donated his time to, um, do this map, which I know, I understand he took quite a bit of time. And you can see the different trails that are listed there. We have the Bullard Canyon Road, we have Dave's Bailout, Nomi's Trail, and then the, um, USFS Road that goes up to Roger Meadow and then comes back down. And then, um, we have brief descriptions of the trails that we need to have them input over to the right. And then on the back is, well, I guess we have safety listed too. And then on the back, we're partnering, of course, with Travel Organ and some more photos on the back, so, um, this is a whole new process for us. We've never done anything like this, we've learned a ton, it's been very interesting and we think that it's, it's going to be a positive thing for our community and bring people here to use the trails for biking, hiking, um, trail running, all different uses, so. Do you have anything to add to that?
Sound it up?
Yeah.
Enjoy the Easter.
Yeah, exactly.
So, I could, is it, it, put it in motels, it promotes the town businesses as well as motels, restaurants, people go up there, come back, take a shower, go get something to eat, maybe spend another night.
Yeah, definitely.
You know, two or three nights, it's.
And we've, um, so the company that is designing this is also designing the brochure for the Geological Features Committee and so they, they're cohesive, they work together so they kind of go together, obviously. When somebody sees it, they're going to recognize that it's Lake County.
So, you're asking from the Travel Lodging Tax, that, Roberto, correct me on this, don't we need a recommendation from that committee and approve it for, to expend funds from the travel?
That was, one that we started with was to have the committee, um, so far, we haven't had very good luck with.
Mike is sitting back there.
I turned it in to that committee.
What was it, our last meeting, in terms of that requesting?
We, and we were awaiting guidelines, which Roberto and I were working on as far as requests and the guidelines should establish the request for the chamber or any other organizations. And I, well, I'll just, I'll stand up and speak a little bit about it. Thank you. Appreciate the thought. The Lodger's Tax Advisory Committee, as many of you who are on the council at the present time, uh, moved forward without the endorsement of the Chamber of Commerce because they told us they did not want any of the funds that were requested by the Lodger's Tax Initiative here in the town of Lakeview. The reason that the council voted to move forward was because the expenditures of tourism dollars up to this point since nineteen eighty-four have been through the chamber and those expenditures come through the tourism dollars that are garnered by the county, of which eighteen percent has been shown by the State Tourism Department to be used for actual promotion of events, the other is used for various other sundries by the county, not really for promotion of our area. So, it's very limited, the major stockholder or stakeholder in the, in the promotion business now is the town of Lakeview and that's what we wanted to do as a council moving forward, was to create Lakeview's own identity. We told the chamber that, they said, we don't want any money and so that was the way that it was situated and so we moved forward, the council voted, we have some one hundred thousand dollars. I heard a comment a minute ago and I, I think what, what is needed and I've been calling for it for a long time, is for the council to come to realization of what the dollars are, what they can be utilized for, and there are many arenas that they can be utilized for. The comment I heard a while ago is they couldn't use for infrastructure. They can in a degree of tourism-related facilities. I had, for ten years, worked on the Lodger's Tourism Initiative, that's why I became a councillor ten years ago, that was my main state, the township had its own Lodger's Tax and its own identity. And so, the brochure was brought to the Lodger's Tax Advisory Committee, Committee in our formulative stage. We've been knocked by, as the mayor told me, the chamber for, courting the chamber president for hoarding our money for the last year since the collections began, which is against the law. Uh, it's not, that is not against the law, not what you heard from the chamber. Those monies can accumulate for a large, a large number of years, but the main thing that's needed is for the town to take a direction in making sure that the funds are expended the way that the council and the town would like to see. That is what we created the board for and that's the identity of Lakeview. Missing from the brochure that was presented before guidelines, it was, like I say, we're in the formulative stages and the only two requests we've had for our monies are the Chamber of Commerce. We didn't want the money from the first place, but we saw the value of promoting our area of tourism and there's nothing wrong with that. I'm one that feels that we should all work together, but we need to work to make sure that the town is not funding for the expenditure of printing of brochures, design of brochures, when fifteen hundred dollars is not going to get you what she's speaking of. I don't know what else you have as far as distribution dollars, they should get all those brochures out or the printing that's involved, but those funds are a far cry from what is being presented to you and I would like to know what the county is kicking in in regards to that same brochure because they get their name branded on their Lake County, but. But in what was presented to the town of Lakeview, there was no brand for the town of Lakeview, which we should have. And we have invited various agencies, as Roberta is aware of, and I have spoke of it. She has an agency that she's speaking with, and I've invited several agencies from in-state and out-of-state to present to the council, to the Lodger's Tax Advisory Committee, the way that those funds should really be utilized by state statutes. So, there's a money grab, $100,000 sitting there. It can be used for various sundries. And, you know, the, the reason we created it works for Lakeview's identity, which has been lacking. So, I say that. We did have a request. We're still awaiting guidelines, which the town was working on some various other projects. And since it's not against the law to hold those funds, to create what is a brand new venture for us, just as they created their brand new venture here recently in the tourism arena. And so, you know, the town of Lakeview is moving forward and it needs to move forward. And the agencies that are on tap to present to the council and to the Lodger's Tax Advisory Committee need to do so. And then the guidelines can be laid out and those funds can be expended for the betterment of Lakeview.
But Mike, the way I see this, is people come in, they use this, they go back, they tell people about this. People come into the town, they stay here.
Uh huh.
And then they go out, they come back. And each time something like this happens, they bring more people in. So, they are actually promoting the town as well.
How would, okay.
In a, in a way.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I told you a moment ago, we should all work together.
Right.
It's, you know, a valuable tool for us all to work together. But to be told, here's a brochure, that you're going to get this distribution to all of these places, when in fact, that $1,500 that you're paying for is not going to get you what you're looking for and what you've been told. And please correct me.
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
And I would love, if you're done, I'd love to stand up and have my moment since you.
Well, I'm not done because I, one of the members of our committee, Dan Henderson, is a member of our committee. And other members of our committee feel that it should go. And the council gave us the good graces that all of the requests should go before the Lodger's Tax Advisory Committee, as you mentioned. And that's the way it was established and that's the way it was set up, the way I was appointed, it's what we've been working forward. If it needs to be changed, you know, we need direction, no doubt. We've asked for direction to a degree and it needs to be worked on. It's being formulated, just as they went through their formulative stages. And we are on that same process. We are in the ballpark to spend much more than the county does on actual promotion of our area. So, the county and the chamber can benefit from the town of Lakeview. And all they need to do is follow into the guidelines, which are in the process of being formulated, as Roberta and I talked as recent as last week. So.
Is there a view, is there an appointment, are you saying that?
I think that Scott was appointed last, I don't know if you've done the appointments actually, but I know he said he would serve that capacity.
We've started on them, but we didn't finalize.
Was this one, one for you, Scott?
Yeah. And I want to go back to something too, Mike. Um, when Travel Oregon was here, we talked about using that money for infrastructure and that is not legal to do. You can use it for advertisement after the infrastructure is set, but you cannot use it for actual infrastructure. They were very clear on that. That is an illegal process for that money to be used.
That's something we're discussing more this weekend.
Well, there, there are funds that can be used, the entire 75% of the fund, or I'm sorry, 70% of the funds.
Right. The 30% that goes to the town.
You can do that for whatever you want to do. It's bad money.
That goes in the general fund. That's totally different. But the, the lodging tax that is, the committee distributes cannot be used for infrastructure, period. They were very clear on that.
Well, that's, that's not what the council moved forward to do anyway. We wanted to spend it on identity promotion.
Right.
And so, that's, I am glad to hear you feel that way.
You're right.
About it. I, you know, but I talked to the League of Oregon Cities two weeks ago, after I heard the rumor that we were illegal in holding and hoarding the monies here at the town of Lakeview. And was assured by the League of Oregon Cities. In no way are we guilty of such. So, I want to assure you all of that. And I'll step out of the way and I'm sorry that the situation has arrived. The one thing that I do want to point out, Ben Anderson did say that he felt that it should go before the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board for approval, if anything. We have not approved it, so that's where it's at.
We're very well-versed in how the TLT tax should be spent. I work with Travel Oregon, Travel Southern Oregon, we work with Oregon League of Cities, Orla, all the time, to make sure that we're spending our county money correctly. The advisory committee, um, I don't know when the president told you anything like that, Sharon, is our president?
She didn't tell me. The mayor told me as liaison to the chamber, he told me that.
Okay. So, the, holding your money, holding the money for a certain period of time is not illegal. Holding it for a long time without a goal, it's, so you can't hold it just because something might come up, like some kind of emergency fund. You can hold it, like Medford held theirs, to help with their sports tourism until they gained enough money to purchase what they needed to purchase on their marketing end of their sports tourism. So, you can hold your funds, but you can't hold it without engaging and just say, "Well, it's not on the table and we're just going to keep it as long as we want to until something arises." So, there's a lot of different little rules that go along with the 70%. The chamber, as far as I'm aware, never said we wanted, we didn't want any money. We stood with our hoteliers when you passed that tax at 3%. So, when it came up and you guys were talking about what percentage you should take as a town, we stood with our hotelier members at 3. And you guys passed it at 6. Which makes us the second highest hotel tax in Oregon, right under Hillsborough. So, um, the town of Lakeview collects more, almost more than Hillsborough in hotel tax.
The town of Lakeview only collect 6%.
On top of the 6% that the county, and then the 1.6% of state. So, it's all together. It's not just 6% for town. When you stay at Best Western, the county gets some and so does the state. So, combined, that makes us the second highest collector in Oregon, period. So, the chamber, when we discussed this, and when I brought Travel Oregon here last year in April, and Travel Southern Oregon, when you guys were asking on what you would be a best practice on how to disperse these funds, they suggested splitting the funds, like normally in towns and counties, they split it with tourism entities. So, like the chamber gets 20% and like if they have a visitor center, that gets 10%. And then they leave the rest of it up to like a council or committee, whatever to do, to do with. The last thing I heard was the committee was dissolved because it wasn't working.
Who told you that?
Roberta and I discussed that. Dan and I discussed that.
Yeah.
We discussed that it wasn't working after.
It isn't working yet. It hadn't worked.
But there's people.
It, it has worked. It's brought a recommendation to the council from the Chamber of Commerce, which was approved by, and, and then we also looked at the guidelines. And that's what we've been doing. And that is very much needed by the town, whether the Lodger's Tax does it or the council does it. It's something that needs to be looked at for a long time.
I don't think this is fair. I don't think saying, "We don't have something in place to accept your request when you have deadlines." They do have a grant that they got from Travel Oregon to pay for the rest of the stuff that you're inquiring about.
How are you going to take care of that in your chamber budget and what you had already done for this year? That's what you're requesting.
And this is not coming out of the chamber budget.
I didn't say what.
And I'm not addressing you. I'm going to talk to the council. So, it, this is a chamber, this is an entity of the chamber. The chamber's basically their, the committee's treasurer, because they're not a nonprofit. They're just a brand-new committee. So, we basically, when they get grants, we have their own, they own, each of them have their own account. And so, we keep their money in their own account. So, the tourism, all three of the tourism committees have their own accounts. So, Geological Features got a grant from Travel Oregon for $8,600. We have that in their account. The Trails Committee got one for $5,000. They also got another $2,500. And then we got another $2,200 from Travel Oregon, Travel Southern Oregon. So, we keep all of that funding for them, for their project. All we're doing is holding their money. And when they're ready, they tell me and I write a check for their project. So, when they got their reassurance markers, Jamie let me know, "They're this much, this is where it goes." I write a check, comes out of their fund. It has nothing to do with the chamber budget at all. It's the funds that they've, they've raised on their own. Western Heritage has received no funding from grants. They've received money from the town last year. They go out and they bask the service groups. Again, I hold their money for them because they're under the umbrella of the chamber, but they're not a, we don't fund them. These are groups that derived from the Rural Tourism Survey from Travel Oregon. All they're doing is furthering tourism here. Your TLT tax should be in form of collateral. You should have a lot of collateral to show if Orla comes asking, "Where'd this money go?" You should say, "Here, here, 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 and here." There are several towns that advertise, the town of Lakeview can advertise in like magazines like 1859. It's a huge way to get the town noticed. Huge way. It's all collateral. It's all the same thing. We get calls constantly on, "Where's your trails? Where's your trail system? How do I get there?" "Oh, well, you start by the pool and you just keep going till you hit the gun range." What now? That's not something that people want to hear when they're going looking on trails. Also, how is, can I bring my dogs on this trail? Is it safe? Can I bring my kids? Can I ATV on this one? Can I do that? Can I do this? Can I do that? Is there anywhere to trail run? We get that all the time. People call, they're staying in Best Western, they're staying in one of the hotels here. They just want to go on a hike. They want to see the stars. And first of all, the trails aren't marked. They're not marked properly. This committee specifically has done that. They're doing that. They've ordered reassurance markers. They've worked with search and rescue to make sure that the color is something that they can see from the sky, from the ground, in any season. They have Forest Service on their committee. They have Lisa from the, from Search and Rescue. They have, um, you know, Fish and Wildlife. They have Shannon, or, um, oh, what's his toast?
John.
John. Um, John Owens. He consults with them. They're, this isn't a committee that's just drawn together some kind of little brochure. This is something that's been researched since last April. This is something they've worked hard on. This is something they have a deadline with. They were doing a brochure during the winter when they couldn't be maintaining and marking those trails. They need to get this done and get this distributed so that they can have this. Mark Albertson just secured an ODOT sign. So, that's going up. It's being paid for by Travel Southern Oregon. The ODOT sign's going up, that's showing the entrance to the, to Outback Trails and to Roger Meadow, which is the entrance to the Oregon Timber Trail. So, this isn't, I mean, I don't think it's super fair to hold and not say, and if you wonder why the chamber keeps asking or, or committees of the chamber, I haven't seen you guys promote this. I mean, I haven't seen the town of Lakeview say, "There's TLT tax here for you."
Because we weren't ready yet. We were in the formulative stage.
I'm addressing the council.
We've only had two meetings, January and February.
I'm addressing the council. And he, last I checked, he's not on the council. Is that correct? Okay. So, I'm addressing the council. I'm here as the Chamber of Commerce. I'm here because these two came here, volunteered, because we got no response, because it's ultimately your decision on how to use these funds. We're asking for $1,500 so they can get their brochure printed and distributed. They have the rest of the funds. They've worked hard to get them. They are working with other tourism entities like Travel Oregon and Travel Southern Oregon. They're doing everything right. They shouldn't be penalized because you guys don't have a committee together that's really working on this. This is $1,500 and they can complete this. Yes, of course.
Thank you both for speaking. But I, I think that's, we probably need to have like a work session soon to discuss this because I don't know that we can just make a decision with these two different opinions.
It isn't your decision though.
I want to make an informed decision. And I feel like I need some more questions as to what, where things are kind of going. We need to touch base with Roberta a little more and see, you know, where things of the rest.
What's going on with you?
Yeah. Um, and, and also, you know, where we are looking at, where we want to spend some money and start talking about that kind of stuff.
But they're on a timeline.
Um, I understand that 100%. Um, I'm more willing to meet, you know, if we need to, outside of.
Anything.
The next two, two weeks from now. But yeah, more than willing to meet sooner. I have no problem with that. Um, I think, you know, what you guys have done is incredible. I think it's fantastic. I one day hope to actually get out there where my children can come and not carry the home away. So, I think that, you know, this is, you guys have done a lot of work and we appreciate it. We just need to kind of figure out some more details a little bit, I think, before we we jump into.
No, yeah, because I guess we're not quite up to date on everything that's happened and, and we need to be. So, thank you.
What is the timeline on this?
Well, our ultimate goal is to have everything completed by June 1st because we are doing a celebration at the end of the Noni Run. And we are celebrating with all the different entities together. And we're going to open the trail up and have a party after the race is over. So, we'd like, I mean, we really need to have it done in May because June 1st is right there.
Could you give us till the end of next week?
Sure. That would be great, yes.
And we'll set a work session.
I'm going to pray for you guys. You guys did a lot of work.
We're not, we're not saying no.
Yeah.
I, I want to make that clear, we're not saying no. But there's obviously some issues between the committee, the council, and the town that need to be dealt with. So, let us go in, we'll have a work session and we'll have an answer for you guys till the end of next week.
Thank you for considering our request. Thank you.
And we did find in Darwin's unpacking of this room, some beautiful signs, actually, we were going to come to you guys and discuss. And we're going to work on getting, I think we're going to have to ODOT, right? About putting these up because there's two incredibly beautiful signs that I've never missed.
It's called Bullard Canyon, uh, road.
And it has.
We haven't changed the name of the road.
Yeah. But we found you today. So, we'll be working with you guys to get those up, ODOT, for more, more advertising. Thank you for your input, Jessica and Mike and Amy.
Sure. Good. I'll stop by and see.
That'd be great.
Okay. Move on down to Oregon Health Authority Drinking Water Service Master Plan.
That was just an approval letter on the.
So, what's our next step on this?
The funding application for IFA, the State Infrastructure Authority, that's submitted. The one to USDA Rural Development. We're finishing an environmental report and have to deal with that. So, the funds are, we're working on it.
So, we're still moving.
We're still moving, yes.
Yeah. We haven't got stopped yet.
No.
Move to Katie Jameson for family foundation. We've got Larry here.
She's here.
I am here. Hi there. Thanks, Joe. Well, thank you. Thanks for having me. Um, I just want to come and say hello and everybody's nice. I'm Katie, and Roberta and I met before. I'm Katie Jameson. I'm the new field coordinator in our area for the Four Family Foundation. Just want to say hello. I'm based in Clamath Falls, so I'm a little bit more local to you guys. Um, so I'm serving Clamath, Lake, and East Siskiyou Counties, so it's pretty big territory. Um, but again, a little closer to home, which is nice. Um, this is a new position for me, kind of a new position for the foundation too. Like I've never really had someone based locally in our area before. So, I'm super excited. I've been in this capacity about four or five months now. So, I'm doing a lot of learning and a lot of listening. Um, we actually had a two-day visit. Um, the foundation had a two-day visit to Lakeview in January, where we came over for a couple of days. Director of the institute and our associate director, and then a member of Children and Their Families and myself all came for a two-day visit, which was awesome. And I've been back a few times to Lakeview, but I'm looking forward, once the weather, you know, is cooperating a little bit more, to be back over here more. So, I just wanted to come and, and say hello. Um, I spent the past two years working in the southern Clamath Basin. I spent the past two years working in the southern Clamath Basin, so I worked with five communities along the border. So I worked with Maribor and Bonanza to like endorse for a couple of years and did a lot of work with them around like community development and, you all ready? And economic development, some tourism work. I feel like a lot of the work that's happening in the southern Clamath Basin, like there's a lot of parallels to like things that are going on in this area. I'm also doing some work up in Chillicothe as well, so a lot of work that's happening up there as well. And I also worked really closely with SCOED, the Economic Development District in Clamath Basin, with them. But I just wanted to come and share just a little information about the foundation. You guys, some of you guys might be a little more familiar with the foundation than others. So they are based in Roseburg, Oregon. The foundation only works with rural communities throughout Oregon and Siskiyou County, California, so communities of 35,000 people or less. So Roseburg's kind of our main office and then we have a scholarship office in Eugene that houses and manages our Ford Scholars Program, which you guys might be familiar with. And I'll share this with you. So we have multiple departments at the foundation. So I'm with the Institute for Community Building, which is like, I feel like it's the hardest department to describe what we do. So the institute was initially formed around leadership development and so they ran this hugely successful Ford Leadership Program. I know they have some cohorts here in this area. This is kind of before my time. But the institute was really about building leadership skills in local communities, so they trained like over 6,000 people throughout Oregon and Siskiyou County. I think they had 85 pubs that they worked in. It was hugely successful, hugely well-received program. They ran the program for 10 years, I think. And now in the last few years, the foundation has made a shift from sort of leadership development to community development. So how can we help rural leaders be successful and how can we support communities that are working together to make things better? So yeah, so we have five field coordinators now that are based out, which is kind of this sort of grand experiment. I think the foundation never had folks sort of out in communities. We have five field coordinators now in the fifth one. So we have four field coordinators in Oregon and then one in Siskiyou County. One of our field coordinators in Oregon, she is up in Woodburn and she's primarily focused on Hispanic engagement and kind of building leadership skills and capacity with the Hispanic communities. So her role looks a little bit different. But just that we're out here working with communities, just to let you know a little bit about the field coordinator role, like we are not here to like lead the process or like tell you guys what to do. Like we have no agenda. Like we're just here to support you guys and what you guys, what's important to you. You know your communities best and you know what's important to you guys. So we just want to help and support you guys in that work if we can. And yeah, we have thought partner, we can connect you to resources, if we can connect you to other communities that are doing similar work. Yeah, we just want to be sort of a resource and a support for you guys if we need it. So yeah, so I just want to come and say hello. I will say that I'm not the money person at the foundation, which actually makes me feel really good because I've never worked in a capacity before where I've had resources. And so now having, being with a foundation that has resources is like very weird and like foreign to me because I'm really not used to working that way. But I'm not the money person, but I can definitely be that connector. And really with the institute, we are more about sort of the relationships building piece. You know, we have funds in our department that we can award, but we really want to build those relationships with community members and learn about you guys and learn what you're doing before we kind of, you know, could probably offer, offer some funding. So yeah, I just wanted to come say hello. And then I'll share some info on a couple of our other departments that I think are a little bit more kind of traditional granting departments. So here's a handout on our Community Economic Development Department. They calls all of our community building spaces grants, so any, you know, anything related to maybe like a community center or any place where like the community would gather, may handle the funding for those projects. And they also have some technical assistance grant funds that are available too. So if you need to build capacity within your organization, like you need to hire a consultant or you want to send someone to a training out of town, something like that, they have technical assistance grants available. Actually, all our departments have technical assistance grants. Also, they do some strategic grant funding through that department around sort of like workforce development, small business development. I would say with the strategic grants that they are by invitation only and so they would definitely, you know, you'd want to have some conversations with our Economic Development Department. And they're awesome. So Kathleen Flanagan's contact information is on that handout. She's the director of the department. Also, Ros Glanbach, she's a program officer for the department and they're happy to speak. Even if you're just kind of like, "Hey, this is a project we're thinking about, like we just want to sort of like found some ideas off you."